Hello, everyone. Sorry for the delay. I'd like to commence Monday, September 9th, 2022, a Select Board meeting held in the Walkway Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, broadcast live on local cable channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. The time is now 6:35. We're going to start convening the meeting. And if we could start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could add a moment of thank you. Thank you. At this time, the minutes, I did find a couple of issues with the minutes. So I wanted to, and it's not a motion to amend the minutes. A couple of the items is the way in which the explanation of the Article 10 was framed in the minutes. I don't believe it correctly captured. And there was another that I would like to add the specific language, just showing that I was in opposition of removing the subsection 174.67 and subsection 7.1. Then there was also on the first action, I think the votes incorrectly reflected, my vote is a yes on the first one, and then Tom O'Hara is a no. I'm not sure if that was reversed, or I don't believe that was accurately captured the action. So I'd like to make those amendments, and I would accept the, I'd like to see the amendments prior to accepting the minutes at that time. So if we could put that off to a later agenda, our next meeting, hopefully.
So moved.
Second.
Did I hear it correct?
Yep, second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. That motion passed. We're going to move on to appointments and hearings, and begin with public comment.
Mr. Chair, you want me to just read from the, in order?
Yes, if we could just ask the folks that signed up for public comment to come up, announce their name and address, and start with the first one, in the order they were received. Thank you.
Marjorie Hatt?
Good evening. Most of us are not developers, contractors, or realtors. We're just Mashpee residents who want to protect our waters from more pollution and degradation. Clean water is the lifeblood of this town's culture and economy. Therefore, it's mind-boggling that the Select Board majority did not support a proposed amendment to the floodplain bylaw last week. That amendment would restrict the amount of fill in the floodplain because the added fill threatens to flood surrounding residences and degrades our waters. The proposed amendment would not make lots unbuildable, as the planning board explained. It simply protects the 2,455 properties in the floodplain from construction-caused flooding and its many bad consequences. Are we supposed to believe that after three weeks, the Select Board majority could not manage to get answers to questions that were obvious? It seems they did not do their homework because they wanted to delay this measure. Why? The people who spoke against the fill prohibition and who heckled its supporters were real estate agents. Is this the constituency that the majority of the Select Board prefers to listen to? Mashpee residents are now paying for problems caused by lack of infrastructure created by the building boom of the 1980s. We don't need to repeat this history. Brian Howes told us last year that there was no good news about the water pollution. It's not likely that it will be any different this year. Yes, sewers are on the way, but more immediately, there are steps Mashpee could take now to improve the situation, instead of more business as usual. That delay attitude is what contributed to our water pollution problem and why sewer-ing wasn't done years ago. There is no rational argument for supporting the profits of a few over the welfare of the vast majority of residents and of Mashpee's environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Next up is Ken DeBraski.
Okay, Wayne, I'm watching. Okay, Ken DeBraski, Three Great Field Landing. Last week, I hopefully put a hole in the balloon of the idea that non-residents use less services than residents. You know, the key there, takeaways there is it's access, not necessarily usage. That's what we're paying for, access to the services. And it could be argued that on certain infrastructure-type items, the non-residents actually drive our costs up. So it's a push at best, and I would argue that they actually drive it up a bit. So I'd like to talk today about why we should do this, okay? Let's remember what we're doing here. We're basically just taking the tax burden and shifting it more toward non-residents and toward people that are above the break even, which I think is like a little over a million bucks, if I remember the number right. So, you know, I would first argue that the folks that have these non-residents homes are mostly vacation homes, they're second homes. And my analysis of the database indicates that the average value is about $750,000 as compared to about $550 for the residents, okay? So, I mean, if you have a $750,000 vacation home, you're doing pretty good. And you've got to remember, these are luxury items. This is purely discretionary, okay? I have a boat, okay? Do I need a boat? Absolutely not. It's totally discretionary, right? I tell you, gasoline is like almost double what I was doing. Did I not use my boat this year? I used it. So again, too, this is a discretionary item. These people are, they can afford it. Same thing with the non-residents over a million. That's me again, okay? I'm doing okay. And like I said, one tank of gas is probably going to be what my increase is going to look like. So again, you know, we are shifting this to people that have the ability to pay. And again, too, when you think about it, what we're trying to do is make it more progressive, move it to, move this tax burden to the folks that can pay and give the folks that are maybe a little stressed a break. That sounds like a good thing to me. Okay, some other arguments. Okay, we have this us versus them. You know, the non-residents are going to be upset about this. Of course they are. They just want their costs to be lower. Do they care about if we have an affordable housing problem here in Mashpee? I live in a community, a neighborhood where it's mostly snowbirds. I'm telling you, they don't. So, you know, I guess frustrated with this stuff, but anyway, look, it always was us versus them. And one more point, because I don't want to come back again next week, is, you know, everybody says it's unfair, okay? It may be, okay? But you know, you knew it when you bought the vacation home. Nobody's changing those rules. If it was unfair, if it's unfair now, it was unfair back then when you did the deal. So, I mean, I don't whine about it now.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, Greg McAlvy.
Good evening, board. Greg McAlvy, 11 Menomishonut Road, Mashpee. For sake of disclosure, I'm a member of your Finance Committee and a candidate for the Select Board, but tonight I'm speaking to you as a private citizen. I just want to say that I'm very excited about the ARPA funds that are available to go forward to help Phase 1 and Phase 2. As a person that cares about the environment, has voted on warrant articles regarding the environment and the affirmative, I continue to see our town move forward in the direction it should be to clean our waters. We can only go so fast. This is a great step in that. I want to give a shout out to our finance team, the treasurer, the finance director, as well as the assessor, for the good job that everyone's done to put this together, Rodney Collins as well and his staff, because these funds are going to help to map out the future and let taxpayers know the cost of what's coming, as well as looking at these tanks that are going to be put in. Now we can hold the load. We don't have to wait, and I think that's a great thing. I think these two articles deserve your attention, and I would respectfully ask that you'd give it your highest consideration. Thank you and have a good night.
Thanks, Greg. Mr. Chair, that was the end of public comment. Signed up on the board.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll move on to the discussion and approval of the following special event applications, beginning with the Community Healing Event, to be held September 25th, 2022, 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., Mashpee Community Park. Donna Jean Lopez, is she present in the room?
Yes.
Yep, they've taken a front seat.
Hello, Donna. This is Donna Jean. Thank you for coming in. If you could give a little bit of background on this event.
A background.
Okay, you're a little hard to understand, David. We are having this event because it is Overdose Awareness Month, Suicide Prevention.
Just so I can hear you on TV.
We're doing this because September is Recovery Month and suicide awareness. And five of us got together and we founded a recovery community for people that are seeking or in the process of recovering from substance abuse, any substance. What made us want to do that is because all the people that are so far involved in one shared spirit recovery community are recovering addicts. And we've made our lives, we've made our lives a good place to be, and we have families. And so our idea of this is to promote what we're doing, and we are peer-governed because we believe that people with lived experience, that have been successful, are going to make more of a difference on people that are fighting that battle right now. And through doing this, we're hoping to reduce, by educating the public, we're hoping to reduce opioid deaths and suicides and awareness for all the other associated conditions that come with it, such as mental illness, illness, AIDS, swapping needle use. So we're doing this for awareness, and also, one of the things about people in recovery are overcoming the stigma, the exclusion, and the shame that they're put through for being what they are. And so we're going to work to eliminate that. And I think by having a community fair where all sorts of resources are invited to come so that we can network and all know who has what to offer, and also to see that it's a community that can recover together, because this is not an isolated incident in somebody's Probably 80% of us in here have come from homes of addiction and dysfunction and trauma. And some people, the only way they could live with their pain was to do drugs. We've all been trained by BSAS and SAMSA to be trauma-informed peer navigators. We have a physician assistant onboard. We're non-clinical, but we also need guidance. We have a physician assistant onboard, a registered nurse that is in the process of getting her master's, a graduate of a college that was business management, and she's now going for her master's in graphic arts.
Bachelor's.
Bachelor, sorry. Bachelor number one. Okay, we can all smile, because like, I'm nervous. So that's why we want to do that. We want the community to get to know each other, do some connecting, and provide resources and education, and hopefully make a move on healing this town and the other communities on the Cape. Our kids are all using together. They don't care about money, relationships.
Town boundaries.
Yeah, there's no town boundaries for them. So, and we love our people. Yeah, we're going to advocate for them. We're going to make sure they're not treated in a despairing way or shunned or treated badly by the public and be included in things that they're able to be included in. So that's where we are. We're at Deer Crossing. We pay our own rent. We buy our own equipment. We've partnered with the AIDS Board Group of Cape Cod, which will also be at the community event. We are a secondary Narcan distributor, so that's where you can get your Narcan from, at town departments and everything else. We give out fentanyl test strips and hope to be investing in the date rape drug tests for young people.
Thank you, Donna.
You don't want to hear the rest?
I make a motion to move this event forward on September 25th, 2022, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Mashpee Community Park.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, all those, is there any discussion on the event?
If they've met all the requirements.
I think we're all in agreement, yes.
Hearing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote? John?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes myself. That vote is unanimous. Moving on to the next item.
Thank you.
The temporary sign permit for the community hiking event.
Excuse me, before we move on, can we just have a question or comment about funding that's going to be coming to the Town of Mashpee from the opioid settlement?
That's not an item reasonably anticipated by the chair, and it would take time to prepare, to be able to answer questions to that. If you could email us to ask those questions, we can put it on a future agenda if it's appropriate.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everybody. Now we hope you feel.
Thank you.
Or you can.
So moving on to the temporary sign permit, community hiking event. This event is scheduled to be held on October 15th, 2022, and November 19th, 2022. They're asking to put signs around some areas. I believe we had an amendment to the cover sheet so that it was consistent with the depicted orientation map on the inner pages. The inner pages reflect nine locations, being at Frank Hicks Way, several at Jobs Fishing Road, three over there, and then five around the Rotary. The cover page, I think, was altered after communication with the applicant, and I'd accept a motion to approve this event and with the sign permits.
A motion to approve this event, the community hiking event, taking place October 15th and November 19th?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure you folks saw the letter of amendment for that.
With nine signs instead of three.
Yeah, thank you.
With the amendment of nine signs instead of three.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, Carol?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And David Reaton, so yes, that vote too is unanimous. We'll move on to the discussion and approval of the following resignations, starting with Starting with the Cultural Council. Mary Kate O'Brien, Member-at-Lodge, term expires September 30th, 2025. I'd accept a motion to accept this resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, roll call vote, Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Carol Sherman?
Yes, with regret, a letter of regret.
Duly noted. I'm a yes as well. That vote too is unanimous. If they could send the letter of appreciation, as typically done. The Board of Health, Kripani Patel, a Member-at-Lodge, her term expires June 30th, 2023. I'd accept a motion to accept this resignation.
So moved.
With another letter thanking her for service.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, is there any discussion?
No.
No discussion, all the roll call vote, Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Carol Sherman?
Yes.
David Reaton, yes, that motion passes as well. Moving on to the election ward, Joseph Saldo, I'd accept a motion to accept this letter of resignation.
So moved.
And with a letter thanking him for his service as well.
So moved.
Hearing of first and second, is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, Carol Sherman?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
David Reaton, so yes, that vote too is unanimous. Moving on to the Waterways Commission, Don McDonald, Member-at-Lodge, term expires June 30th, 2024. Again, I would like to accept this motion, this resignation with a letter of appreciation.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, no discussion. Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Carol Sherman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that motion too is unanimous. Moving on, move on to the discussion and certification of the hiring certificate for the health agent Zachary Seber. Pronouncing that right, yes. There is a memo attached from Brian Baumgartner and the Board of Health Chair, and he writes a very commendable support of this. It sounds like he's worked with Zachary for a number of years and speaks very highly of his professionalism and feels as though he'll be a huge asset to the department. So I take a motion to approve the hiring certificate and process.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing of first and second, any discussion?
I would just add, Mr. Chair, that this was posted in thorough selection process, and the individual went through an initial interview. He was also interviewed by myself, and he, as you have already pointed out, came highly recommended by the Chair of the Board of Health, who sat, I believe, on the oral board. So this individual was highly recommended by all of those involved, as you've noted, and I know that the procedures of the town were followed, so therefore, I just request that the Board certify this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So, did we have a first and second on that?
Yes.
Yes.
And because it's a department head, I should have added, you'd be confirming as well.
Thank you for that. Hearing of first and second, if there's no discussion, roll call vote, Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Carol Sherman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That vote's unanimous, and welcome aboard. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, will be our wastewater consultant, Ray Jack, providing an update on the status of wastewater project Phase 1 and other items. Welcome, Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to be accused of losing you here. You're on the screen up there, but the mouse isn't working.
Yeah. Oh, there's a mouse there. Okay, here we go.
I wish I could have been there as well. There was another matter that warranted my presence as well.
Okay, where are the presentations?
Oh, here you go.
Here we go.
I guess we'll get Justin. Justin.
There you go.
Can you see that? Mr. Chairman?
I cannot.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do I need to, on my screen, it does say share screen. Should I share my screen? I mean, is there something I have to enable to allow you to share your screen?
So we can see it here, Mr. Chair, but.
We're checking right now.
All three?
No.
Is it IT in the room?
Yeah, we have someone here that.
Yeah, it's the one, that one on the right, on the bottom, on the right. I'm going to just share this screen here. Okay.
There we go. I have it now. Thank you.
Awesome. Nice job.
There you go, Justin.
There you go, Justin.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Have a fair amount of material to cover this evening. Specifically going to be talking about Contracts One, Two, and Three, funding, awards, as well as specifically with Contract One, the use of ARPA funds to fund additional tanks, which is the capacity of the plant, and ARPA funds for doing a notice of project change, which I will explain. And then lastly, a discussion of the SRF/PEF issue, which is State Revolving Fund for the SRF, and PEF is a project evaluation form. That's how any funding initiative with the state starts, is submitting a project for approval. So... It's not advancing. There we go. So since we have the town seal, the new town seal on the cover slide, and one of the inspirations for that is the Mashpee River. Here are a couple of shots of the Mashpee River that I took. And I think that what is truly impressive about this, especially the one on the right, isn't even so much the river as much as it is the ecosystem that it supports with its associated wetlands. I had said this once before at a meeting, that 50% of the nation's wetlands are gone forever. To find something like this in a community like Mashpee is something you just don't see anymore. I'm going to be speaking about them a little bit later, too. I apologize for this slide. It's the only one I have that represents the actual plant, which is Contract One. So in the future, there will be shots of the construction, so that you can stay with it as it goes along. But for our discussions this evening, the primary issue here is this very small area right there. Those are the process tanks for the plant. And at present, we can only do a couple of them, so I'll be getting into that. This is a nice metric drawing of the plant, just so that you can see what we're talking about with respect to the tanks. The, obviously, the dark gray building is that portion of the building, which is above ground. Then it does have a basement, which is in very, very light gray and an outline. And then you see the tanks on the outside. So over here on the left, you can see some lines that were drawn out here, and it's hard to read. But these first lines here is for the base bid, meaning that there are a total of eight tanks that constitute the flow volume for the plant, which would be 460,000 gallons in total. The first two tanks are included with the base bid. This next section right here is alternate two, which the bidders bid on. We were able to allow that to be awarded right now at the present time as the alternate. But then this last one here is the other four tanks. So this is what we're looking at this evening, is trying to get the other four tanks into this contract. And this is another set of isometric views, just so you can see how the tanks were actually constructed. So on the upper left, this shows them when they're open. Shows you inside, there are actually four different areas. There's one, which is going to be an anoxic area at the head of the plant. And then you have the aerobic area, which is where the process actually occurs. Another anoxic area on the end, and then this is where the membrane filters are actually located. The depiction on the lower right is showing the covers that are placed over the tanks. And I do want you to pay attention to the footings as part of the construction. That if you try to add four additional tanks in the future, you're going to be going right down the side of the wall of the process building. You're going to have to go deeper than the foundation of the process building in order to put these tanks in. I do not recommend doing that. If it was all possible, my recommendation would strongly be to put them in now. So, the problem, we have 12 alternate items that were listed. And they were listed as alternates. There's a total of 18 overall for all three contracts. They were pulled out of what you would consider the original proposal that the town actually wanted to do with all three of these projects and listed separately so that the town would have the opportunity to award them one at a time in the event that the bids came in too high, which they did. Had these bids come in $2 million higher than what they did, we wouldn't be here this evening because we wouldn't be awarding anything. There would be insufficient funds to award anything at all. So here, we can only amount, we can only award the base bids, which includes two of the process tanks. That's 26.727 million on the actual bid. Alternate one, which is a carbon scrubber, that's an odor control polish unit. So it's a secondary odor unit at the plant. The primary is a biological odor control filter. But this is absolutely necessary. And if anything happens to the primary, then this would be considered secondary backup. So this is 280,000. And then alternate two, which was two additional tanks for the plant, which would be 956,000. Alternate three can't be awarded because that's the remaining four tanks, and there's insufficient funds, which I will explain on another slide. But at 1.67 million, and that 1.6 includes a 5% contingency. So the actual bid was something less than that. But think about it this way, from a value perspective. When I say it represents the highest cost risk, if it was delayed, you're getting two additional tanks for just under $1 million. And then you can get four tanks for roughly 50% more, 57% more than you did with the first two tanks. All right, so you're getting twice the amount of tankage under this bid for 50% more of the money. It would also take extensive construction on a new plant, which is something we certainly didn't want to do if you don't have to. So for the recommended solution under Contract One would be to use the ARPA funds. And we've had this discussion with myself, Dawn, and Craig to try to figure out the best ways to do this. So you have the county ARPA fund with $657,000. They are dedicated to Phase One only. So right now, Contract One, Two, and Three are the Phase One system, all right? So these funds are restricted to being used only for Phase One. Then you have the federal funds of 694,000, which were being applied to this for this example. Part of the existing preparation of the plant was 325,000. Total equals the cost of doing the additional four tanks at 1.6 million dollars. So this concept has been endorsed by the Sewer Commission. I think they are unanimous in their support of trying to get all the tanks done at this time. For the collection system, this is our next problem, if you will. The good, there's good news and bad news. The good news is that there's no really bad news, all right? But then the bad news is that there are at least some solutions to some of these problems here. So that's what I'm covering this evening. So the collection system consists of Contract Two and Three, and one is north and south of 28. Over here, you can see this is where the treatment plant is being located at the transfer station. This is Route 28 or Falmouth Road, which bisects the two sections. So the one in the south is roughly twice as large as the collection system in the north. And I'll be getting into some of that. The plant itself is located off Ashers Road. So here we have Contract Two, the section that's north of 28. And you notice up in the upper right that you have a set of dash lines on a couple of those roads up there. Any place that we have dash lines on these contract schematics is an indication that that was pulled as an alternate, all right? So here, that's what this represents, Meeting House Road and Hanson Drive. And the alternate is not being done under these contract awards. Then you have the southern portion. And once again, you notice that there's a fair amount of dash lines up there on different roads. And I'm going to start running through them. You have Christopher Lane, Egrit Court, Pine Road, Antunes Ave, and Rainbow Ave. So these were under alternate two for Contract Three. And the total value of those roads was in the 900 and some thousand range. Then we have the remaining dash lines, which are these, and these roads. And there is also a lift station located where the star is. The actual value of that's about $2.5 million. So this is one of the reasons why they were set out as alternates, because of an expected high value. So the problem here is that we can't do those roads. Now, when you add them up, for alternate two, you have 33 residential homes. For alternate three, you have 57, so it gives you a total of 90. You add 10 homes from Meeting House Road in Contract Two, and that's 100 homes. Project-wise, there are 439 homes total in Contract Two and Three. This is taking off 100 of those homes. So would we like to get them done? And the answer is yes. So you have a total of 100 properties. We have insufficient funds to award any of the remaining alternates beyond this. So the solution would be the SRF/PEF process, and I'm going to explain that on this slide. So from a project evaluation form, this is how Mashpee got the money to begin with. Submitted the project to the state. It was granted in the amount of $54 million and change. And that was done through a project evaluation form process. We filed a project evaluation form with the state under the SRF program on August 12th. And the reason being that August 11th was the final bid that we had received on the contracts. And that was the bid for the plant. That bid came in by itself $8 million over what the estimate was. As I said, had it been two more million higher, we wouldn't be standing here at all. For what it's worth, there's really no one to blame along those lines. I don't think anyone anticipated, when this was funded originally, of a 9% inflation rate, supply chain issues, and especially when it comes to the technical equipment and the electronics that are going to be necessary at the plant and the lift stations, all right? But nonetheless, this is where we are, so it's a reality. So in filing this, it's a placeholder. It is not binding on the town. The request was put in for 12 million. The actual value of all of the alternates combined is about 8 million. But, and you'll see on the far side of this, this isn't expected to take place, if it becomes a reality, until next spring, at the next Spring Town Meeting. And then it would take some level of time beyond that. So given that I don't have assurances that the inflation rate's going to drop, I don't have insurances the supply chain issues are going to be fixed. And nonetheless, even if they weren't, the inflation alone, over that period of time of eight months, can be substantial. So in an uncertain economy, the request went in for 12. That doesn't mean that that's the way it's going to be. It's just making sure at this time, there's going to be enough to cover everything the town wants to do. So it was to cover all the alternates, especially the roads. And I'll be showing you the alternates a little bit later. So now what happens here, and by the way, that was their deadline for filing that. That's why it was done that way. August 11th, we received our final bid. August 12th, we had a piece of paper into the state, or we had no option whatsoever, all right? So now they'll review it, along with all the other communities of Commonwealth. And then they come up with what's known as the intended use plan. For those projects that they select for this year to go on to that plan, that list will be published by SRF in January. They identify which projects are considered eligible across the state. Each town is notified of its eligibility, and then it's decision time. At that point, do you want to proceed with it or not? So if so, it would be put on the Spring Town Meeting warrant, have the opportunity to discuss it, amend it, remove some of the items and/or reduce the amount, and either affirm or deny it. In my opinion, the chance of success of the state approving the entirety, as far as the amount goes, I would put it at better than 98%. And I say that because they have a vested interest, just like Mashpee does, that they awarded the project at a taxpayer's money of $54 million. They didn't anticipate a 9% inflation rate. They didn't anticipate supply chain issues. And they already know for a fact, there are towns out there to put projects on the street, and they can't award them. All right, fortunately, at least we can make an award. But for this project to be a success for them, it's got to be finished. So in my opinion, I think it's a highly likelihood that it's going to be successful in that endeavor. I didn't want you to get too busy on this slide. It's a lot of numbers. The intent here was just to show you how many alternates we actually have. We have 12 alternates on Contract One, one on Contract Two, and one, two, three, five on Contract Three. And they're all of differing values. Down here on the bottom left, it says combined. Total plus the contingency is just under $8 million. So that's what we're actually going to be looking for, adjusted for inflation and what have you. The contracts are over on the right, and I'm not sure if I can move that view. Yes, okay. So you can see the contract values. These are the values as they were approved by the Sewer Commission. So Contract One is 27,905,000. Contract Two is 5,240,000. Contract Three is 9,806,000. Try to keep the numbers of the collection system in mind just a little bit, bearing in mind that I said that Contract Three was twice as large as Contract Two. So think about Contract Three. And the total value of two and three combined on paper here right now is about $14 million, all right? That's serviced 400 and some homes. Just try to keep that in the back of your mind as we go forward. So here's a funding snapshot, all right, which basically puts it all on one page. I'm going to start at the top left on the appropriation of $54 million. Engineering was 6,502,000. Details, many police details, utility installations for gas, electric. And then you have any other cost that we have is $2 million. The remaining funds would be 45,497. That's what is available for awarding contracts. The base bids came in at 41,472. The base bid plus a contingency, because we have to have a 5% contingency going through on this, brings it up to 43 million. You subtract that from the 45 million, that leaves you $1,950,000 to award alternates. So Contract One on the right, 27,95.024. And Contract Three, 9.806, total 42,735. Those are the award values with the carbon scrubber in it at the plant, the second set of tanks at the plant, and the lift station coating on Contract Three, which is in about the $84,000 range. So the total there, plus the contingency, comes up to 44,872, and that leaves 624,000 remaining. So that was the problems, if you will. Now we're going into the next phase of everything. So this is the original plan as it exists for Mashpee in its certificate from Meatball Office, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. The black line represents town boundaries. You see a lot of color up there, and some of that is outside the town boundaries. But then you see a lot of it is also within that red line. The red line represents the watershed for the town in its entirety for this geographic area. So it's presuming from a watershed perspective that the impacts and the embayments are not just caused by those in town. It's also caused by those out of town. They have different colors for the phases. Phase One is right here in the center area. That's where we're working now. Phase Two is light blue, so you can see it has the southern portion down here, including Pirate's Cove. Then it has another section down here on the east side of the embayment. Here, both south of Mashpee Commons and north of Mashpee Commons is blue. Then you have the Johns Pond and Schumett Pond area over here with a fair amount of blue. Then you have this blew up here in Sandwich, okay? When you look at that collectively, that is a lot. And quite frankly, that is something that I don't believe the town can afford to do in any one shot. And this phased plan, there's five places that were supposed to take place over a 25-year period. The plan started in 2015. It was supposed to initiate with Phase One in 2017. We're five years behind already with respect to that. There is no way, in my opinion, that the town would be able to afford to do this in one shot. And I don't know why we would do those that were out of town at this time without appropriate intermunicipal agreements with other communities. So then you have Phase Three, which is the lighter green area. So you have the large area up here, which is basically East Main Street. And then you have this area over here, which is outside of town. It's in Barnstable. Couple other areas down here that are in Mashpee. And then this area down here that's south... And then this area down here that's south of the embayments, that too is in Mashpee, and the little piece all the way up here on the other side of Schumett Pond. Then you have Phase Four, which is all in yellow. Down here, a substantial portion of it is in Falmouth. Then there's this portion here, 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 and here, which is in Mashpee. This is in Mashpee. This is in Sandwich. And then a very small piece over here that's in Barnstable. Once again, it's a very large geographic area. We don't have the intermunicipal agreements in place yet to cover any of this. Then Phase Five is the orange area, large one over here, which is wholly in Barnstable, large one up here, wholly in Sandwich. This one is wholly in Sandwich. This I would characterize as Main Street East or Main Street West. And then you have a small area over here, another larger area over in the Schumett Pond area. One all the way down south here near Waukegan Bay. So that's your original Phase One through Five plan. It's colorful, but it's all over the place, in a sense. Now you have Phase Two A E, A through E, as it was presented to the board by the Sewer Commission last year. Down here, you have Two A, which was a section that was designated as a Phase Two area to begin with, and this concludes Pirate's Cove and Mashpee Road area. Then down here, up here, you have Two B, which would be the Main Street East area. Then you have Two C, which is Main Street West, and Two D, which is the area on the east side of Santuit. And as you can see, a large portion of this extends up into Sandwich. So that was part of their original plan, was incorporate that as well. And then Two E over here, which is a large portion of Schumett and Johns Pond. Now, their goal made a lot of sense to me. The original MEP program or Massachusetts Estuaries Program, which Brian Howes would have been able to explain, was intended for one purpose only, and that was to protect embayments. The commission took a look at this and said, yeah, but the ponds are doing very poorly. What can we do for the ponds as well as for the embayments? So please understand, I'll be talking about this rephasing effort here, where you're looking at taking sections that were in Phase Three and Phase Four and even Phase Five, and including them in the next phase of searing, but it makes a lot of sense. It's adjacent to the ponds. And all of that is also affecting the embayments, and they were pre-designated anyway, just in different timeframes, okay? So the state can't argue with a realignment on the phasing to begin with, but it makes a lot of sense to me to try to kill two birds with one stone, and that's what this is attempting to do. So this is Two A through F. This was as I had modified it, which now the major changes here. You're looking at Two A is the same, Two B is the same, Two C is the same, but then you have Two D up on the upper right, and I don't know where the mouse went on the picture up there. But the Two D area up on the right is about half the size of what it was previously, and that's because it stops right there at the town line, because there is no agreement with Sandwich at this point to do that. Two E, this area over here, was removed from this. That was originally intended to go to Joint Base Cape Cod, and there's a lot of logic to that. If that happens, Joint Base Cape Cod Sewer System was only taken over recently by Converged this year, earlier this year, and there are no agreements in place there for anything at this time, for what it's worth. Two, the town has to pay all that, and I know there were some, for whatever reason, were thinking somehow, just because it's going to Joint Base Cape Cod, it's really not going to cost anything. That's going to cost a lot. It's a geographic area that every stick of Maine, the town has to pay for and install it. It'll be a town contract, and it'll take a large lift station to move it up to the base, and then there's going to be a perpetual fee that the town will pay to the base. How all that works out, I don't know yet, but nonetheless, for, I think, our purposes at this time, it was a big bullet to try to chew on with respect to all of the other areas that the town is trying to do. So the goal here was to try to make it more manageable. Then we have, this is a better version, I think, of Phase Two, to try to show it a little bit better. I can move it over here, but I can't move it there. All right. So this is Phase Two on a different type of map.
Move David so we can see behind him.
I can't move him. It's, yeah, it's, this mouse is moving this one on here, but it's not moving that one And there's no, yeah, because I can move this, but I can't move that. Oh, there we go.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, good. All right. I can't see now, but that's okay. So, all right. So we have Two A, start Mashpee Neck Road slash Pirate's Cove area, all right, down here on the bottom right. Then you have East Maine, which is Two B, so this here one is to the north, and I'm calling this the East Maine slash Santuit Pond area. For what it's worth, I looked on the town's website for community names, because I do like to, you know, be quaint with the names of geographic areas. This thing just exploded with community names. There's got to be fifty community names for that area up there. All right? They're all over the place. So this is what I came up with. Then we have Two C, West Maine and the Mashpee Pond area, and you can see surrounding these ponds, there will be a direct and immediate effect, all right, if these get done. Then you have Two D, which is Santuit Pond East, and as I said, that was cut in half. And Two F down there, that is the Sandalwood subdivision down here on the southern side. This was originally posed as one of the Phase Two areas as well. And then for connections, I'm showing up here that you have a main that connects Two C to Two B, and then a main that goes down what would probably be Meeting House Road to connect into the plant. Now, there is an alternate opportunity that could take it from this point down here on Section Two B and bring it down here, down to Falmouth Road, then back up here, and then back into the plant. The actual distance and cost, I'm not sure, but that might actually prove to be more expensive, all right? What this also does, this encompasses the Main Street area up here, such that Town Hall and all the properties along here would get seared as well. Then for Two F, Two F was originally intended to go to Mashpee Commons and/or Windchime and/or South Cape. I don't know what the final resolution on that is going to be, so I'm just drawing it, showing it's going to connect to Phase One. And then we have the Mashpee River again, and I said I would say something else about this. This picture and the other two pictures I took, I thought they were really beautiful pictures. They were taken from the shores of Sandalwood. That's exactly what you see when you're standing there. So what that means is if you flush that toilet today, the fish will be swimming in it tonight. Now, that may be an exaggeration, but I can assure you, it's not that far from the truth. So the reason that this is in there is really for reducing the impact on the Mashpee River So now we have the Notice of Project Change, and this is what Ms. Dangle was trying to put forth for town meeting. It's really the same project, but there was one word in that that made it different, and that word was the construction of the design drawings. So I'm going to be elaborating on that somewhat here. The Notice of Project Change is what it's actually referred to as, is required by the MEPA certificate, that's Mass Environmental Policy Act, and we are required to do it. So it reevaluates the existing plan, all five phases that you just saw, under what's known as an adaptive management approach, which is actually a very good approach, because in the old days, and I remember that, when a town had a wastewater plan, it was a twenty, twenty-five year plan and was very rigid, you will follow it or else. There was no strategy for changing it. It was an extremely cumbersome process to change that plan. So what this is using is an adaptive management approach by the state that says for shelf propagation efficacy, efficacy just meaning that something's doing what it was intended to do, but the town has a propagation plan, a very healthy propagation plan that is relying on for trying to reduce as much sewer effort as possible. So then the town also has to evaluate the searing effort and the benefit thereof, stormwater management practices, are they working? Same thing with fertilizer management controls. Then it's going to revise all the phasing as necessary. It's been seven years already since the 2015 plan, and by the time that's done, it's going to be nine years. This provides cost estimates for all phases, existing or modified, including, and this is what was approved by the Sewer Commission, was Phase Two A, B, C, D, and F. All right? So we will include that in there as well, and then it will re-phase any of these areas that were grabbed out of other areas. The other areas will be rephased as well. It allows for financial planning, both operations and capital. Right now, we really don't have that, but when you're starting to look at big-ticket items for design and/or construction for the future, the town has a long-range plan on all of its other capital needs, but you don't have it on this yet, and you do need something to be able to make that, to make those decisions responsible. So it allows the town to do that. It's going to allow for onsite systems such as Title V and IAs, or Innovative Alternative System Planning, based on the sewer plan. And the reason here is, there will be an initiative to take the onsite systems. You have Title V systems, you have old cesspools, you have some IA systems, but what happens when one of them fails? And what happens when a new home goes up or a new subdivision goes in? What happens when they transfer ownership? So these are all questions that, for anything that is not in a sewer service area, then I think the town might be considering something like the IA systems, so that everybody has a responsibility for the overall issue. So if you're not in a sewer service area, that would be a solution. But unless you know where those areas are, you can't make these decisions, right? Results in an updated Sewer CAD model. The CAD in caps represents computer-aided drafting. So they will have a model for every phase of this system. They will have the piping in those models, lift stations. They will be able to analyze what the potential costs may be. Why is that important to me? Because I operate a little different than some others may, in that from a design perspective, and the original article was calling for a design initiative, and I know the town was looking at that before, I have to ask you this. You decided you want to build a house, so you want to buy a piece of property first, and then you're going to build your house. So what do you design first? What are you going to do? You don't design a house until you've got the property you're going to put it on, because the property location is everything. It's going to be different in Alaska than it is in Florida. It's going to be different in an earthquake zone than it is on the edge of a cliff, all right? And that's going to dramatically impact design. So why would you go out and start a design? Because when you start talking design and sewer systems, you're into millions of dollars. When you start design, you're into millions. An effort to design Phase Two would be about two million dollars, just to get it to a twenty-five percent design phase. You have two questions. As a property owner, you ask yourself, where am I going to put this, and what's it going to cost me? This gives you the answers to those questions. By rephasing and doing a modified Phase Two, it's telling you where you want to put the sewers. And this, the Sewer CAD, is telling you how much it's going to cost you to do it, phase by phase, piece by piece. Now you have the two answers you need to decide if you want to go into design. So for my purposes, and this is just me, all right, I am, I've never been in favor of jumping into a twenty-five percent design, because you will incur millions of dollars. It always has an escape clause that says, if you don't like it, you can get out, but you've already spent millions of dollars, right? It's up to the town what they want to do, but it's not what I would recommend. So this is also the first step toward obtaining a DEP watershed permit. We talked about that when DEP was down here with the board. This effort gets you to that. It doesn't do it for you, but it gets you there. It's also the first step toward design and the SRF loan. The PEF is the project evaluation form. IUP is the intended use plan. If you decide when this effort is done, that it's something that you may want to proceed with, pursue, or whatever the case may be, then you're welcome to fund the design portion of it. This is an evaluation slash analysis slash a costing effort, but it is not a design effort, right? But it'll also, keep in mind, it is something the town has to do. The effort takes two years. We're requesting ARPA funding and a level of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for it. So your choice, in a sense, would be a couple of million for design or doing something like this to lead up to it for two-fifty. My recommendation, of course, would be for approval. This is just showing you how many properties are in the respective areas that you've seen here tonight. So you have quite a few, if you will, some bigger than others, and as I indicated earlier, the Two A, B, C, D, and the F are the ones that are being recommended under this. So the proposed contract award values were twenty-seven million, nine oh five for the main plant. That includes the carbon scrubber and two of the tanks. Contract Two is the base bid only. Contract Three's nine million, eight hundred and six, and that includes the wet well coating and a lift station. The recommended approval for the awards then would be for Contract One, the amount of twenty-seven million, nine hundred and five thousand. Contract Two, Collection North, five million, twenty-four thousand, not one hundred and ninety-eight and ten cents. I don't know what contractor's bidding on a multimillion-dollar contract comes up with ten cents. But they do it. They do it. Contract Three, I'll pay the ten cents for what it worth. Contract Three, Collection Systems South, nine million, eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one. And then to recommend approval of the ARPA funds for Contract One tanks, which is all of the tanks. So you'll have full capacity at the plant at this time. It does not include putting in all the process units, meaning blowers and things of that nature. You know that the membranes for each of the tanks, it includes the tanks themselves. So that would be using the county funds, which are restricted to Phase One anyway, six hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars, forty-one cents. ARPA funds at the federal level, which are unrestricted, so that's six ninety-four, one ninety-six, fifty-nine, and then the existing appropriation of three twenty-five for the total of the total tanks, one six, seven six, eight fifty. I'm recommending, also recommend approval of the ARPA funds for the Notice of Project Change effort of two hundred and fifty. And that's it. I hope it wasn't too painless, too painful, I should say.
Very informative. Great job on that.
All right.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Very, very comprehensive breakdown. Hold on. Did the member of the board have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I do, actually. If I may.
Yes, you have the floor?
Thank you. My question is, I'm definitely in favor of, we talked about this as far as the additional tanks. So it sounds to me like a no-brainer, and it sounds like that for the last few weeks I've been thinking about it. My question is, with these additional tanks, will that take us through the coverage of Phase Two?
Yes.
That has the capacity to cover our Phase Two?
Yes.
You need them to do that.
Right. So, okay, that was, that was my, and then my second question was, the dotted section of your mapping of those streets, which represented about a hundred residents, somewhere about that, those are included?
No.
Those are being removed at this point?
Temporarily, yes.
Temporarily, okay. I'm good.
When will we look at putting the temporary ones back in?
These contracts are expected to go two years plus in the construction phase. If the ARPA funding is approved for the main plant, for the tanks, that would go through as a change order, because we already have our state approvals in very specific numbers. We can't change them now without resubmitting to the state. So I expect that that was going to go through at the values that you saw this evening. The other ones, the values may change, meaning that a contractor is not expected to hold their bid prices for that period of time, eight months. So it would mean some form, some form of negotiation. For what it's worth, I'm usually pretty good at that, and the reality is, they're already here, they're already making money, and their job is to make more, okay? So they're not going to, you know, slap something away if it's reasonable, but then again, it is also reasonable for them to not have to carry that inflationary cost and also reasonable for them to not have to carry that inflationary cost and/or other issues. I think that they are the most affordable to try to get done down the road under the SRF program while the contracts are still underway. If we try to even do something like that with the tanks eight months from now, I'll bet you that cost would double what you saw up there tonight. No doubt in my mind.
What about the cost of the blowers and the other things that need to go in those other tanks?
They would be handled under any future contract when, you know, if the town decides to go into its next phase, whatever. But they're easy to do. They're all inside there. Easy to do.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm all set.
Ray, I was wondering, how comfortably, how comfortable do you feel with carrying only a 5% contingency with just the way things are going with construction costs?
Thank you. That's a good question. In a perfect world or not, 10% would be great. However, realistically, the, I've always been very strict with contracts. Change orders are a fact of life, and there will be change orders on the project. I understand that. But the money we're spending here is all taxpayers' money. And it will be spent judiciously. It will be spent effectively and efficiently. That is my promise to you on that. So would I like to see more? Sure, I would. But at the same time, these contracts should come in on target.
Good.
With, as far as the, the alternate to include the additional four chambers, how soon with your phasing would you need to that additional capacity with the modified phasing?
Well, I think that that's really, that's really a decision for the town on when they want to engage their next actual construction contract. But you are already several years away from that. This being 2022, you're looking at a year for design, almost two years for the phasing effort, that's three, and then another year for an SRF period of time and actual funding by town meeting. So you're probably a four or five years, you know, down the road from now. That's, that's going to put you into 26, 27, 28 timeframe.
Thank you, Chair.
So the other question I had was, you know, if you were to, what if you were to take and put your slabs, because it looks like this chambers, I've, I've worked on some of the CAD drawings on, in past life. So when you, when you do the chambers, you know, you have that thick slab at the bottom, bottom is the foundation, and then you include the water stops and the channel locks. What if you were to just do the, the foundation element and then left your water stops and kind of, so that you have the base, and it wouldn't be such a modification to go in and undermine your existing facility and build the chambers at a later date? Would there be any cost benefit to doing something like that?
No, I think it would actually be a, a cost detriment, because the cost of underground escalation contract installation is going to increase dramatically over time. So even if there was any attempt now to try to save some money, you're going to lose a lot more of that down the road than what you're saving.
No, I, I just want to throw a lob that out there. Just, I mean, for the cost, it seems like a, a, a no-brainer to fund that. The only other question I had was, with the current phasing, is there any consideration and evaluation analysis, cost analysis to doing a, a, less of a municipal sewer as with a central location and doing more of a, a, a targeted area phased approach with kind of smaller plants, similar to, you know, what we have at some of the other subdivisions currently?
From a planning perspective, the original plan from 2015 was intended to be the backup for shellfish, if shellfish propagation wasn't as effective as they thought it was going to be. So as a plan, it has to meet a threshold. And under the new plan that the state is coming up with, that the town is going to have to accept, it's going to be a 75% removal over a 20-year period instead of 25. That is a fair amount of searing. So I don't see the state accepting any plan moving forward that is not going to meet that goal. It's going to have to. And that takes large tracts of geographic area. So we'll, we'll obviously consider the affordability and the effectiveness of each section of each phase as we go through this effort. But I, I can almost assure you, a lot of what you saw on that original Phase One or Phase One through Five map is also what you're going to see in the future as well. It's just an unfortunate reality.
Ray, you done, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, that's all, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ray, on the, the process, as, as you progress, will we put Phase One in operation as quickly as possible? Is that going to be, are we talking 2028 before we're up and running?
No, Phase One's going to be done in the next two years.
And it would be run, it would be operational?
Plant and system will be pumping wastewater within the next two years.
So move in, because my concern was that it seems like it's, it's a long way down the road. And how do we protect our river's base and estuaries from further degradation because of all the effluent that's still flowing? And that was my concern, if it was going to be in lock. But they will be activated, and they will, will start protecting the, the bays in, in the short period of time.
Yes.
Yeah. You have my blessing on this one. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'm all set.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Town manager, assistant town manager?
No, Mr. Chair. I just want to commend Ray Jack for the research and the preparation. He had discussions with myself and the assistant manager at length, along with the finance team, the finance director, the treasurer. And I also would just say, the logic always appeared in every presentation he provided. And it was thorough. It was easy to understand. And it was endorsed. And we're just looking for the board's support.
And I think you do have the board's support.
Very well.
Do you need a motion?
I don't, well.
I just want to make sure everybody's done. But yes, we're going to definitely want a motion.
Okay.
Are we, just curious, are we, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, just, I'm just curious about, is Don going to come in and talk specifically?
She, she is here, and she's here to.
Wouldn't that be appropriate to make the motions at that point with her?
That would be fine.
Just because there's a lot of members here, and we have to make sure we do this correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say, Ray, that I have to agree with Mr. Collins, that, you know, you do a very thorough, thorough job on your presentation. It's, you're breaking it down to a rudimentary level where, you know, it's easily to, easy to follow. And we're very fortunate to have you on board. And just want to express the appreciation of the board for, you know, making this as easy as possible to understand and follow. And, you know, it looks good. It looks, I, I like the direction to go in. It all makes sense. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all.
So at this time, we're going to ask Finance Director Don Thayer to come forward. And was she going to present tonight on the ARPA funds for the Phase One wastewater project?
Yes.
Thank you for having me tonight. I really want to thank Ray. The two of us sat down looking at the numbers, and we felt it was imperative that those tanks be put in. So my first question was, how much money do you need? And as he stated, it was the $1.6 million. So we started to brainstorm. What I'm asking for, from you tonight, as you know, the ARPA funds do not require town meeting approval. It requires the vote of the board. So that's what I'm asking you to approve tonight, is approval of the spending of ARPA funds for the additional tanks, as well as the Notice of Project Change. As far as the tanks, I can break down, we, we've actually, if you have the memo, we broke down the funding of those tanks into three different sources. First of all, Mr. Jack looked at the numbers and felt that $325,000 of the $54 million can be used towards those tanks. So that takes off $325,000, right off the 1.6. As you know, the ARPA funds from the Barnstable County are required to be used for Phase One. When I applied for those, that's what it was stated. I had to state what we were going to spend those on. And it was for Phase One, which actually was a, actually a good, good thing, I guess, because we're getting $657,000. Oh, we have $657,000 that we received from them. So that is going towards the tanks as well. And then the remaining $694,000 is actually the local ARPA funds. As you know, the county received funds on behalf of the surrounding towns, including us, as well as the towns received ARPA funds directly. So when I say county funds versus local funds, I mean, the local funds are the funds that we received directly from the federal government. So the remaining cost after taking away the $325,000 and the county ARPA funds of $657,000 is $694,196.59. By utilizing those three sources, you will have covered the $1.6 million for the tanks. So those will be done. That's right up front.
So a motion to.
Approve.
Approve ARPA funds, because they are ARPA funds, correct?
Correct. I would ask you to approve the Barnstable, the use of Barnstable County ARPA funds in the amount of the $657 number that you have in your memo, and then the use of the ARPA funds received by the town directly in the amount of the $694,000. So...
So I, I would accept a motion for the board to vote and approve, based on the recommendation, the approval, the use, the town manager's office to take any action related to the utilizing the ARPA funds received from the Barnstable County in the amount of $657,653.41 in ARPA funds received by the town directly from the federal government in the amount of the $694,196.59.
So moved.
And I, just for clarity, you're authorizing the town manager to execute all documents with regard to this matter on behalf of the board?
Yes. So moved.
As clarified.
As clarified.
Hearing a first and second, and considering Rodney's statement and clarifying that, any further discussion on it? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Tom O'Hara?
Yes. Pleasure.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Carol Sherman?
Yes.
David Reedens, a yes? That's unanimous.
The second request that I have from you is to approve the use of local ARPA funds in the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of the Notice of Project Change, as explained by Mr. Jack.
I accept the motion to recommend, based on the recommendation, to fund Phase Two Notice of Project Change from the local ARPA funds received for Phase Two, NOPC, in the amount of $250,000.
So moved.
Second.
And for clarity, that would also authorize me to execute all documents on behalf of the board.
Yes.
And for the town manager, authorize all documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
I accept the motion with the amendments suggested by the town manager. Do I have a first?
Yes.
Second.
Second. Hearing a first and second, any discussion on that?
No.
Hearing none. Carol Sherman, roll call, vote?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
David Reedens, a yes? That vote's unanimous as well.
And just.
Thank you, Don, for breaking that down. And was there anything else you needed from us?
I just wanted to mention that you will have $545,132 remaining in ARPA funds. So that will be at the discretion of the board. You would have to go through the same process to approve those, those, the expending of those funds.
And that is for Phase One?
That, that can be for anything. Those are ARPA funds that we have in hand, can be used for any purpose.
It does not need town meeting approval.
It does not. That's the one thing I wanted to point out.
So we can approve that at any time?
Correct.
That's the board.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Thank you.
Wow. Awesome. Awesome.
Thank you, Don.
Good job. Way to go, team.
So we're going to go into the, Brian Howell, is that, that was removed from the agenda? He's going to do a presentation at our October 3 meeting? Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. He can now get the presentation to us in time.
Okay, that brings us to Communications and Correspondence, I believe. Oh, no, wait a minute. The Department of Natural Resources Director, Hashley Fisher, a discussion on approval of the Shellfish seed donations from Forest Development Group. My apologies.
I just want to let you know that Don, Don Thayer will be talking to that, Chairman.
Okay. Is Don ready to speak on this?
Yes. So.
You have the floor?
So we did ask for the, a legal opinion before we accepted this donation. My understanding, I was not involved in the whole process, but when I was approached by the Department of Natural Resources regarding accepting a donation, I just wanted to make sure that any donations, donations accepted by the town were done legally, lawfully, and there would be no issues. So my understanding is that Donovan, the, the Shellfish Constable, assisted, I shouldn't say assisted, but he helped a resident go through the process, the permitting process. All the fees were paid, everything was done. But as you know, it can be very complicated to replace a dock. I think there were some dock upgrades, is my understanding. And that can be cumbersome, and there's a lot of paperwork involved, a lot of steps involved, a lot of agencies involved. So the Shellfish Constable did assist in at least directing this individual to help them, and guide them, I should say. This individual, once all was said and done, wanted to show their appreciation to the town and wanted to make a donation to the town, I believe in the amount of $3,000.
Yes.
$3,350 for the shellfish program, propagation program. I just wanted to make sure there was, there were no, you know, anything that, that looked wrong, I should say. So I did reach out to town council, and he assured me that because the individual, the property owner, paid all fees, all permits, everything was paid by him directly, that the select board could accept a donation on behalf of the Department of Natural Resources for the shellfish propagation program. As you know, any donation made to the town has to be accepted by the select board. So I believe that's what they're looking for tonight, is just an acceptance from the board. is just an acceptance from the board.
And I, and I too was concerned about the perception.
Did you have a question or?
No, we're just gonna make a motion if you, unless you want it to.
The only question I had, um, Mr. Thayer, was that the, uh, I was wondering, I know town council looked at it, but under the law, is there any kind of clause that, um, it has to be a specified amount of time that passes after a permit is issued that would, um, uh, be called into question? Was, was that mentioned at all?
No, no, he did not mention anything of that nature. He just said that, um, it would be completely acceptable for the board to accept this donation. Um, I believe because the process has been completed by this homeowner, uh, there is no issues as far as waiting to accept the donation, waiting to expend the donation. Um, what we will have to do from an accounting standpoint is we will ensure that this, these funds are put into or segregated within the shellfish donation account so that it can only be used for this particular purpose.
Other question I have is, um, would, would the donation be, being accepted from the, the Ferris Development Group? Or would it be, uh, accepted, uh, from Mr. Ferris as a personal donation?
I believe it is the resident. I could be wrong with that, but that's my understanding.
I was under the impression too, Mr. Chair, that it was the resident. Uh, I can double check on that just to be sure. Um, I think everybody at our level was concerned and that's why it went to town council. But we were assured that as long as the board accepts it, uh, and clearly the public is aware of what we're accepting and why, um, we're good. But if you have a question regarding who the check is going to be cut by, then we could wait until the next meeting. Or, or approve it contingent upon finding out.
Yeah, I, I'd be willing to accept the motion to receive the donation. I would run it by, uh, town council to find out if it would be preferable, in his opinion, to receive it as a personal donation, um, rather than from the development group.
Received and we'll check.
Do I have a first and second on that?
Motion to accept.
Do you want us to wait, David?
Coming to a contingent.
No, we'll move it.
We'll move it forward.
It, it was based on his, his approval. I mean, I'm willing to move forward with it just, uh, basically, I'd like to factor in his recommendation.
Okay, so.
I don't think we have to hold it up.
All right, so I motion approve and accept the donation of $3,350 from Mr. Ferris.
I second.
For shellfish and natural resources initiatives.
So just for clarity, if it's a, if it's coming from him, we're set to go. If it's coming from the development group, we'll come back.
Sounds correct.
That sounds fair.
Second.
Having a first and second, um, roll call vote. Carol Sherman?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
David Wheaton, uh, yes, uh, so that vote's unanimous. Thank you, Don.
And thank you, Mr. Harris.
Uh, discussion on approval of formation of Harbor Management Committee?
Mr. Chair, I think the memo that you all should have received from the Department of Natural Resources dated September 1st provides a detailed explanation of the Harbor Management Committee and its, uh, its purpose. And it was respectfully submitted by the DNR Director and the Natural Resource Officer, the Harbor Master and the Shellfish Constable.
So the action from us, what we're looking for is, um, to establish the Harbor Management Committee?
Yes. Uh, one person from the planning board, one person from the waterways commission, one person from the shellfish commission, one person from the conservation commission, and one person from the Wampanoak Tribe. Two persons from commercial waterways interest. And did I forget any? No, that's it. And, and he did have, uh, some recommendations for specific individuals if you go further down. I should say, she had recommendations.
So are, um, are there any members at large at this time?
There are two that she mentioned, I think.
Seeking to be appointed? I guess I would just like, if there's, because was this advertised and things? Any kind of opportunity to sit on it, was it advertised? Um, I understand, you know, the representatives from the boards and things, but if there's any kind of at-large members, uh, two persons from commercial waterways interest, was that advertised?
I don't believe it was.
We do have one, we do have two letters of interest. I don't know if it was advertised or not. There's two letters of interest.
I, I just want to be fair in the process. It, it's a new committee we're establishing and, you know, it does look like there was some solicitations, um, to join. You know, I don't question their expertise. Um, I, I, I just want to be fair in establishing a new committee that we're providing everyone with a fair opportunity to, to contribute.
Absolutely, and because I cannot specifically answer your question, I would respectfully request that it be tabled until your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, you know, the mall for establishing the committee, the work that it's going to do sounds well needed and, um, looking forward for them to get started. Uh, like I said, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not cherry picking folks and, and we're providing opportunity for, um, folks that really care about all these issues. I know a lot of people do, that we're providing fair opportunities.
Absolutely.
Okay, motion postponed. Table.
We recommend table.
Just table.
Table.
Will, will motion to lay this on the table?
So moved.
Do I have a first and second?
Second.
All those, uh, roll call vote, please. Carol Sherman?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
And myself is a yes, so, uh, motion to lay on the table is unanimous and passed.
And, and just for clarity, we're not saying that process wasn't done. We're just not able to verify it, so we're gonna hold off.
No, I, I understood, and, you know, just.
It should be done.
Appreciate that.
Yep, no, it should be done, so if it wasn't, then we'll correct the error.
Yeah, if it wasn't posted, then I would suggest we take the time to post and, um, offer the, uh, the opportunity to the general public, um, just so that, uh, you know, we're being fair.
We, we definitely will.
Communications and correspondence. And members of the board have communications and correspondence, uh.
Not at this time.
No, all quiet.
That's last week.
Liaison reports?
I have one. The Mashpee Chamber is calling for all designers and artists. They want to redo their logo. And if anybody wants to participate, um, they can submit, to information, info@mashpeechamber.com. And that's all I have at the moment.
Okay, um, holding on, town manager updates?
I do have some good news relative to, um, the auction for what we thought was a bunch of junk. Uh, took in $14,600 for the journal fund, so.
Nice.
That's always good to hear, um, after it being declared surplus. It's amazing what the, uh, online auction, uh, brings in. And I credit the administrative assistant for coordinating that effort with, uh, the online auction here. I also, if you want me to get into it now, Mr. Chair, the, uh, the open meeting issue?
I couldn't hear that last part.
Um, do you want me to parlay into new business or do you?
Yes, please, if you would.
Okay, the town did receive an open meeting law complaint in regards to its September 12th, 2022 meeting of the select board. By procedure, we need to distribute it to the board, which it has been done. Uh, the board must review it, which I presume you will. We must respond in writing, and there is an established timeline. Uh, the board can delegate this task. I have consulted with town council. Uh, town council and I suggest that the vote, that the board vote to authorize myself through council to respond to the complaint accordingly.
Is there any action from, um, members of the board at this time that you need tonight?
Nothing other than the authorization, um, to respond.
I accept a motion, um, for town manager to respond accordingly in solid procedure in dealing with this matter.
So moved. Second.
Having a first and second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call vote, uh, to approve, Carol Sherman?
Yes.
John Cotton?
Yes.
Tom O'Hara?
Yes.
Uh, and I'm a yes as well. Uh, that motion's unanimous and passed us.
That's all the business I have, Mr. Chair.
Is there anything for executive session?
No, no, sir.
So I would accept a motion to adjourn at this time.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Say yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Good, good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you for, um, productive meeting.
Have a good night.